Okay, I would like to welcome everybody to Beaver Creek Township and Beaver Creek and School District's joint meeting tonight. I want to thank everybody from the township and the city for coming. We love these meetings. And prior to this, I want to say that for everybody here, this is an informational meeting, only there is no public speaks at this meeting. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Okay, so I'm going to call to order our meeting. I'm gonna, we're no roll call or anything. Is she doing it from there? Oh, okay. So we're gonna have the city hold to order their...
Roll call please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia, councilmember Littrell, councilmember Schwartz, vice mayor Beaus.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Motion to excuse councilmember Garcia.
She will be here.
She will be here.
Littrell.
And councilmember Schwartz.
Second.
Motion to have a second excuse, three in favor, six in public. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Township.
Good evening. The purpose of this special meeting is to meet in open session with the officials from the City of Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Board of Education to discuss joint ventures and items of mutual interest between Beaver Creek Township and the City of Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek City School District.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Dr. Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Hunt.
Here.
Mr. Morrison is absent.
Mrs. Regano.
Here.
And Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Thank you. Do you all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna turn it back to the city to pull over the agenda.
Do you have an agenda before us, any changes, up, picks, or corrections?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to have a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, six in public, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Ms. Wallace.
Yes.
Mrs. Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Kreit.
Yes.
School board, I need a motion as second to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's call vote.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Regano.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hunt.
Yes.
Okay, we have discussion ayes, we're gonna turn it over to the city.
Yep. Okay, good evening township trustees, city council members, Mr. Mayor, school board members. It's a privilege to be here tonight to talk about our partnership that we have with Beaver Creek Schools and to highlight some of the activities and the different things that we do with the Beaver Creek Schools. Starting with our SRO and our DARE program. So our SRO program has existed for over 20 years, and in the 2016-2017 school year, we added a second SRO. So we now have two SROs in the schools, one's predominantly at the high school and the other one predominantly at the middle schools. And then we have a DARE officer who instructs the DARE curriculum and also spends time in the elementary schools. The DARE partnership has existed for the past 34 years. And just some, a little bit more specific about some of the details that they do, some of the activities that they, that the SROs and the DARE officer engages in. They teach classes throughout the schools. They work with school staff to resolve any law enforcement issues or other issues that may come up. They conduct safety exercises in the schools. They have a presence at sporting events and other extracurricular activities. And then they also conduct security and vulnerability assessments and work hand in hand with the chief security officer Williams at the high school. So they have a strong presence in the schools and we're proud to be able to have that involvement with, with the students. We also have an intervention program that was started through the juvenile court, the Green County Juvenile Court, and that's called the Handle with Care Program. And that's a partnership that we have with the schools that basically when an officer encounters a child in a, in a, in an incident or a call, we notify the schools. And so they can get involved as needed with the child that was involved in some, potentially some type of traumatic experience or whatever that incident was. And the schools are able to develop a plan to assist the child in more of a long-term setting. So that's the Handle with Care Program that we work with the schools in the, in the Green County Juvenile Court. And then also, community engagement programs that we have. So we have the Safety Town and Dare Camp. Safety Town is specifically for students entering kindergarten and entering first grade. And it's a week-long program in the summer where obviously we, we have instructional lessons for the kids, obviously age-appropriate. And then there's a Safety Town that they're able to engage with. And obviously it's a way for them to learn more about, just be involved with our officers and learn more about things that can help them and safety-related tips. And then also our Dare Camp, which happens in the summer. That's at Camp Birch in Yellow Springs, and that's for fifth grade students. And they, they go out there for a week and also, you know, and so engage in camp activities as well as learn various things about law enforcement. And then we have, I know the fire department comes out, the township fire department helps us with that at the Dare Camp. So it's a very comprehensive program for, for students to learn about law enforcement, fire department, and engage in a lot of fun activities. Along with those camps, we, we work with the schools and they've been able to provide us with volunteer, student volunteers with the National Honor Society and the ROTC programs. So I know it's, it's extremely helpful to have those volunteers come in and support us and help us at the, at the Safety Town and the Dare Camp. And then also, some trainings that we do where the school, schools help us out and assist with. Every summer, we do an annual SORAT training, an active threat training. And so we generally move that from school to school. And the township fire department is also involved in that training, and we've been working with them for years on that. And it gives us, it's great for our officers in the, in the fire department to work together. And, you know, in a, in a situation that would require a response, in an active threat type of a situation, it gives them the practice and the experience of entering schools, clearing, you know, clearing out the school and working on their tactics and their techniques along with the fire department in rescue operations. So, so we're greatly appreciative of the schools giving us those facilities to be able to, to be able to train in there. And then also, just recently this year, another partnership that we developed with the school, we started an honor guard program with the police, for the police department. And the ROTC commander with the schools has been involved in helping us train our honor guard. And their first event that they did actually was at the 9/11 ceremony, and they did a great job. And the, and the ROTC commander was out there with them, you know, helping them and encouraging them. So, so that was great to see. And, you know, just to reiterate, the, the partnership that we have has been strong for so many years. And, you know, my goal is to not only maintain it, but to look for ways to enhance it when we can, look for other opportunities to have those partnerships. And, you know, it's an honor to be able to work with the school and the township to develop those things. And it, it falls all in line with our, with our mission to work in partnership with our community. So I'm gonna thank council, I'm gonna thank the trustees, I'm gonna thank the school board for, for all of your support and for the opportunity to, to help us with these programs and for us to work with the youth. So, very appreciative of that. And I will open it up to any questions that you might have.
Ooh.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Save your questions to the air.
We've got the fire department.
Good evening. My name's Christine Hawker. I'm the assistant chief with the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department, and this is my first presentation in front of all of you. So, we'll see how this goes, but I'm happy to be here, and I thank you for allowing us to be here, and I thank you for your time tonight. So my name, as I said, is Christine Hawker. I am the assistant fire chief, and I will be presenting the fire department update. First, I'd like to do a little introduction, not only of myself, but of our organization. So I've been in the fire service since 2000. I started with Washington Township Fire Department, and then I was hired with Beaver Creek Township in 2002. Once I did that, I was a teacher for 10 years before that. So thank you, Board of Education. Greatly appreciate that. Enjoyed being a teacher. I earned my Bachelor of Science from Wright State University in education. I maintain my firefighter and paramedic certifications, as well as my inspector certification. I've completed the Ohio Fire Executive Program, which is through the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. And I'm currently going through my master's in fire executive leadership and public administration. I maintain two credentials. One is the Ohio Fire Chief's credentialing, and one is the chief fire officer's credentialing through the CIPSY program. I'm also the accreditation manager, and I also have our assistant accreditation manager here tonight, Division Chief Dustin Harrison. And I'm currently acting as the interim fire chief. Phew. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that opportunity and want to make the most of it and continue to move our organization forward. So for our organization, we currently are staffing one chief, one assistant chief, three division chiefs who represent administration, service delivery, planning and quality improvement. We have three captains who operate as our shift commanders, so they are in charge of the daily operations. We have 57 firefighters and 15 lieutenants. We operate advanced life support engines, advanced life support medics, a rescue engine, a ladder truck, and then we have a rescue trailer that houses the ATV and the boat. And we also have multiple pieces of reserve apparatus in case our front line apparatus would happen to break down. Thanks to a great public service department, that doesn't happen very often. Our capabilities, we are currently authorized to do fire suppression, emergency medical services, technical rescue, hazardous materials, community risk and fire prevention, and auxiliary. We are funded by the following sources. We have four permanent levies. We utilize EMS billing, fees and permits, state receipts, and grants. Last year, we were awarded over a $300,000 grant for our extraction systems for the exhaust in the station bays. So we are currently working through that grant. These funding sources generate approximately 16.9 million annually. And our funding commitments for our 10-year funding stay the same, and that plan is to maintain quality and level of service, to staff to support call volume, to build two new fire stations at $6 million each. One of those has already been built, that's Station 65 on Trebine, to purchase the following equipment, four engines at $550,000 each. All four of those have been purchased. One ladder, which has been purchased, at approximately 1.2 million. We have five medics that we are planning on purchasing. We've purchased three, and each of those is approximately $325,000. We also want to continue to provide community outreach and training, plan and prepare for large incidents and natural disasters. Next, you'll have some beautiful pictures. Hopefully, there we go. So the pictures on the left, that's our new rescue engine that came in last week. They are working on driver's training currently, and then we'll put that in service very shortly. The two pictures in the middle are our new ladder truck, and it is still being manufactured. They are planning on doing the final inspection at the beginning of October. And then on the right-hand side is one of our medics. Those medics will be wrapped to match the color scheme of our other apparatus. And we have three of those that we purchased that are, they arrived last week as well. So, looking forward to getting all of those pieces in service. We operate four fire divisions. We have a service delivery division that handles suppression, emergency medical services, technical rescue, and hazardous materials. We have a planning and quality control division that operates strategic planning, standards of cover, self-assessment, and EMS billing. We have a support and technology division, and they function with the budget, the payroll, dispatch, and capital improvements. And then we have community risk, which is also fire prevention, and that is managed by the fire marshal, and they enforce code, public education, and fire investigation. This next slide represents our coverage area. So the red outline is our entire coverage area. There are two colors on the map. One is a little darker gray on the left-hand side, and one's a little bit lighter green on the right-hand side. The left-hand side is the city boundaries, the right-hand side is the township boundaries. We have five fire stations located up here in red, so the little dots that you see. And then down on the right-hand corner is the proposed Station 66 with the runway for the airport. That is currently in the land acquisition phase. So our call volume, year over year, so this is from January 2020 through June of 2025. Period minus one, that is from June of 2024 to June of 2025. We did 7,732 calls. Five years prior to that, we did 5,927 calls. So you can see our call volume is increasing every single year, as well as this year, we're planning on breaking that 8,000 call volume level. So continued call level, volume increases, which leads to a total of, those particular numbers that I have up here, the total medical calls for that is 27,120. Fire calls is 5,533. And other calls, which are tech rescue calls, hazmat calls, et cetera, 1,535 total calls. So we keep very busy. The next slide represents the levies and our EMS billing. So the first four are our permanent levies, represents the year they were established, the book rate, the effective rate, and what they yield. And then the bottom one is our EMS billing, which does not have a book rate, but it does have an effective rate. That's the percentage that we collect. The book rate is the rate that it was passed originally, and the effective rate is based off the reappraisals of property. And if those increase, those effective rates will decrease in order to maintain that book Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about accreditation. We're currently going through the accreditation process. We are so close. With that accreditation process, we have generated a new mission statement, a new vision statement, and our values, which are before you hear. Our timeline is to have all of our documentation submitted by September 30th, so that's about two weeks from today. We plan on having our site visit from December to January. Our peer team has been assigned. It's looking like the January dates are probably the one that we'll be going with, but we haven't confirmed that yet. Our commission hearing would then be March of 2026, where we would hopefully become accredited. And our guiding documents that we've developed out of this process are the strategic plan, which quite a few of you in this room were part of as external stakeholders. And we greatly appreciate that input, our standards of cover, and then our self-assessment. This next slide is the IT equipment list. So this equipment that you see up here for each entity is what each entity owns and uses throughout the city, throughout the township, and throughout the county. Each one of these lists represent what those entities use, but everything is housed by the Beaver Creek Township. Okay, so everything is controlled by one computer. And you also have a list of this before you. And the way this list works is this is your external agency communication list. It starts out with the location of where this equipment is placed. So initially, you have the fire administration tower and the IT room. And then it will break down each device, what that device is, who owns it, the location of that device, the primary use, the secondary use, any associated equipment, and any notes. As you turn through the packet, you'll see that it turns into Station 61, Station 62, and then you can see the owners changing, whether it be county, schools, city. So that provides all the information and the details of the list of all those entities and what particular communication equipment that is actually housed through Beaver Creek Township. Next, we have a couple slides that represent some pictures of our engagement with the city schools and the county. So the first one is our active threat training, which chief mentioned prior to me coming up here. The first picture on the left is actually the, one of our rescue task force teams and the police department evaluating some patients. The middle top is our CERT program, which is housed by our auxiliary. And they can assist with additional manpower. So they're a force multiplier in our organization and utilized and a tremendous asset to us. The bottom middle picture is our rescue task force team, as well as the police department, working together to extricate patients during the active threat training. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the collaboration between the schools, the city, the PD, and the fire department for our unified command position. The next slide is a representation of something that we just completed on September 4th, and that was our Citizens Academy. We had a fantastic time. We loved having it. On the top left, that was our activity for trying on fire gear and learning about fire gear. The middle photo is Captain Ferguson showing us how to use a rope system and gaining mechanical advantage, and showing that two people can pull a very heavy load. You can't see the heavy load, but it was, it was a very big load. On the top right, we had a question and answer session with the chiefs. On the bottom left-hand side, that was our auxiliary demonstrating their aux fan, as well as discussing what other things they provide, such as victim assistance. They house the cadet program for us as well, which is a feeder program for our fire department. In the middle is Lieutenant Dean showing us how to use the Lucas device. So this Lucas device provides compressions for CPR, and it allows us as manpower to move on to something different. So maybe provide an IV. So it's basically an extra set of hands. And then on the right-hand side, finally, we have our fire marshal Randy Grogan showing us how to use fire extinguishers. And that's our presentation. So that's our fire update, and we thank you for all of the, the continued commitment to work together and provide great service to our community. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Okay, planning and community development, city and township.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name's Randy Burkett. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the planning and development director with the City of Beaver Creek. I've been with the city since 2006. Worked my way up from associate planner to planning director over the last five years. Also a 1996 graduate of Beaver Creek. Go Beavers. Tonight, I just kind of wanted to go through a few slides. What the planning department does, you know, we're, we're in charge of managing development as it comes through in general, whether that be residential development or commercial development, making sure that whatever someone wants to build is within our zoning code. What they do build is cohesive with the neighborhood and meets the standards that planning commission and city council set forth in the early portion of the development phase. And then ultimately, making sure that it stays maintained for the long term. Also, in my department is code enforcement, and that's more on property maintenance if houses are in a state of disrepair. And that's more on property maintenance if houses are in a state of disrepair or what. We haven't had it in the last month because there's been no rain, but over the summer when we get a lot of grass complaints. But grass complaints have gone way down in the last couple of weeks, so I don't know why. But enforcing the, the property maintenance code for all properties, the 19,000 different parcels that we have in the city. One of the things I want to talk to tonight is about our single-family housing that we've seen over the last decade or so. In particular, over the last five years, you can see since 20, all the way in the early teens, you know, we were doing 30, 20, 30, 40 houses a year. A little spike after the pandemic and then down in '22, we did 43. But since then, we have gone up tremendously in the number of new single-family housing starts. And we're on track this year to have 120 and that's more than I've seen since I've been here since 2006. I think back in the early 2004 I got here, late 90s, they were doing somewhere in the 200 to 300 houses every year. But we haven't seen that come up that, that high yet. But I'll go over through, through a few single-family housing projects here in a few minutes. And I anticipate that number to stay elevated over the next couple of years. One of the things I did in 2023 from the department standpoint is we looked at what vacant acreage do we have left in the city? Because we're looking to where, where we anticipate development happening. Nine times out of 10, we've seen it happen on vacant land. So in 2023, we looked at the vacant parcels and we had about 1,780 acres of vacant parcels in the city. But a major, 10%, of that was infill. So throughout the neighborhoods, there was an empty single-family lot. So there was actually a lot more than I anticipated when you actually got down to the numbers. Of the 1,780 acres though, about 17% of that is owned by families or organizations that we've talked to that said they have no real interest in developing. So that's kind of, that takes those, those acres kind of off the table when we're talking about future development. And about 30% of the 1,780 acres is within the FEMA flood plain. Now, the city does allow development within the flood plain, but there's a lot of regulations and it does create a lot of challenges to develop. So if you're below that base flood elevation, you have to raise the building up however many feet it takes so that you're not below that base flood elevation. So that's a costly endeavor. So that's kind of a barrier to development within the flood plain. In 2025, I re-looked at those same vacant parcels and 10 of those properties from 2023 that were vacant have projects going on right now. So we subtract that, we're down to about 1,430 acres of vacant property. And I know a few of these projects, a few of these properties, I'm going to be talking with projects over the next couple of months about developing. So basically, we, you take all the properties that are, have challenges to development or not. The family said that they're not interested in development. For future residential, we only have about 320 acres left in the city. That's, are considered lower hanging fruit to develop, that art called for. So looking at our densities and what we, how we classify low-density residential currently in the land use plan, it could yield about 7,000 homes over the next 20, 30 years at current development rates. Speaking of the land use plan and densities, we're in the middle of updating our land use plan. We started it earlier this year. We've formed a steering committee. We've had four steering committee meetings and one public open house. And the intent of the land use plan is, since the city began in 1980, we haven't had a third-party look at our land use plan or help develop a land use plan. It's always been done in-house. And so we wanted to get a third-party perspective come in and help us go through best practices to create a land development plan for the next 20 years that also incorporates not just me updating the existing land use plan, which I've done, I did in 2011, 14, 17, 20. I've used that same language over the last 20 years. So I wanted to have a third-party come in and help. So we're in the middle of that process. And that process also includes a rewrite of the, or an update of the zoning code. Now we're looking to do that as soon as the land use plan is updated because the land use plan is kind of our guiding document and the zoning code are the rules and regulations we use to help achieve that vision set in the land use plan. So we can't redo our zoning code until the land use plan is updated. Where we're at on that, we actually have a second public open meeting, open house meeting. It's tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00. So anybody who doesn't want to go home after work again, like they did tonight, you're more than welcome to come up. It's at the senior center. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. Now, last time I had a public open house, it did start at 5:00. I had about 50 or 60 people there at 4:30 because they were convinced I was going to do a presentation at 5:00. I'm not doing any presentations. It's just a come and look, see and discuss. I'll have various members of the steering committee. I'll have staff there. So there's no formal presentation. So you don't have to be there at 5:00. Come anytime between 5:00 and 7:00 and we'll be happy to answer questions and take public input. A few development projects we got going on right now. One, Ellis Garden. It's down on Swigert Road. City council approved this in last summer. And they're looking to begin construction, spring of this, this coming spring. It's kind of hard to see on the map, but over here, Swigert Road does a fairly sharp curve. And one of the parts of this project was to get them to help pay for a softening of that curve. So it's not quite as a sharp angle. And so we're working through that project, process with city engineer and their, their engineers. And I believe that we're going to get started on that project next year as well. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. So that'd be 96 single-family homes on about 47 acres. Another project is Bridalwood. That's going to be on South Alpha Bell Brook Road, just south of Terra. Terra is up here to the north. And then it's, right now, it's, I think it's the Tacky Horse Farm or was recently the Tacky Horse Farm. And so they're looking to do 117 homes on 50 acres. That was, that was in October of '24, not '25. Sorry about that. And actually, I just heard from them last week about, hey, we want to get started and get moving. So I would anticipate that they're going to get started grading yet this fall. And again, that'll bring 117 homes in. We've got interconnections to the north on two existing streets. And then I have a sub-street for any future development that might occur south of the project. Wrightwood Springs, this is a project that council had just recently approved. It's for 117 homes, or I'm sorry, it's 121 homes on about 56 acres. It's, if you're going up Grange Hall, you look to the right, you see the new stormwater detention ponds that were created as part of the Willow Crest Stormwater Project. And so that's, that's going through the, finalizing the rezoning portion of the project. They did a site plan and rezoning at the same time. So we're, we're finishing it up on that. And they, again, as the others anticipate to begin construction and grading late this year and start having homes potentially by next fall start becoming under roof. And finally, the, we call the Thoman Project. I don't have an actual name. The Thomans were the landowners. So they haven't gone through an actual site plan process. The rezoning was a hard-fought battle that we did winter of this year. And I haven't heard from them since. I don't know if they got scared of the public hearings or, or what. But I anticipate as much, as much as they took on to get the rezoning through, that we'll hear from them probably this fall for a site plan with the construction to begin next, next year. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak. That is actually a QR code to my email address if you want to quickly email me any questions. But otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have here.
Where was the Thoman Project? Where was that located?
See if I can.
I was having trouble with the picture.
Sorry. Just north is where the tornado in Garden, that's the tornado area up in Gardenview. West of Grange Hall, north of Kemp.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
In public service rooms project. Oh, township, you're planning and development? Sorry.
It's all good. Good evening, board of trustees, school board and of course, city council. Mr. Burkett covered pretty much everything our departments do. The city and the township are virtually the same and doing the same things with code enforcement, Board of Zoning Appeals, plan developments and that sort of thing. So I'll just get started in a few of our developments that we have currently. Some of these I talked to you about last year. By the way, my name's Andy Earhart. I'm the community development director for the township. And last year I was here about two months when I got to give my first presentation to the board. So this year, I've got a whole year under my belt. So we'll see how that goes. Oh, we have a permit comparison. So basically, we've seen kind of a converse thing to what Randy was talking about. Our single-family permits have fallen off a little bit. You can see where we're at 253 last year and then we've just saw it this year. We're down to 127 midway, almost towards the end of the year. So I don't know if it's change in the election cycles or the economy or whatever, but we do have a lot of single-family projects that are in the pipe now. So I anticipate that to pick back up, but we are in a lull for us. If we extrapolate that out, we'll probably, we'll be lucky to hit 200 by the end of this year. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, top row. Single-family. Total permits is where we're down, big time. Go to the next slide. Here's our plan unit development. We use this for tracking of our plan developments. You can see basically all of our different plan developments are listed here and where they're at in the current phasing of them and where they're at as far as completion. Right now, we have, like I said, we have a lot of them approved. 984 total approved lots and then 228 shovel-ready sites. Now, what that means is we have 984 approved, but the ones that have been recorded and are ready to go are the 228 shovel-ready sites for the township. And so that, as far as it equates to the school board, you know, one or two kids per house, there's another few hundred coming your way in the next couple of years. Move on to the next. So here's our, some of our new and active developments. We have Nathaniel's Grove, 475 single-family lots that were, that were approved and of those, 270 have built. White Barn Trail is one of our Stone Hill Village projects. There's a few of them. 82 single-family lots and 36 have been built. Courtyards at Stone Hill, 162 lots and only 13 built. So they're, they're trying to put a big push on now and get some advertising out and get that underway. Hillside Farms, I talked about that last year when I was here. It was just approved. Those are luxury apartment buildings, 246 townhome-style apartments. And Phase 1 is under construction with 97 units. So you'll see that, that's right there at the corner of Hilltop and Tray Mine. And then the green at Overbrook, that's a senior center, 99-bed senior center. Should be coming on within the next month or so and it's almost complete. Down in the southeast corner, we have kind of a lot of stuff going on. Dayton Xenia, just west of Tray Mine, we have a light infill of 22.83 industrial acres that started. It's been rezoned to that. We're still waiting on their final plans to come through. 60.38 industrial, the Green County Commissioners bought that land right adjacent to the Green County Airport. So I mean, if they, they bought it, I'm sure they're going to, going to be doing something with it. So that'll be coming online. The pink ones are some more residential. There's 67.39 and 64.99. Those are ones that have had some interest, but we've not had any official cases filed yet. So we anticipate those coming online sometime probably in '26 or '27. And then the blue here, we do have the Phase 1 of the Valley Bell Connector. It's fully funded. We've gotten everything ready to go. It's on track. We've signed the paperwork to move forward with the engineering on that. And it's part of the overall Valley Bell Connector. We've also acquired that 8.6 acres of right-of-way. That's how we'll continue on across to connect back in. So we're really excited about that. We think that that'll open up a lot of accessibility. Fire department will have better access to that southern end of the township. A lot of good things to come, but that's a ways down the road. I mean, there's a lot of funding that has to be acquired between now and then, but we're working through it. At least we got Phase 1 underway. You can go on to the next one. So that's what I talked about earlier. This is the, the green at Overbrook. I think they're going to actually change the name of that, but this is where we were at, at the time. So it's about 100% done. They're doing their interior finishing and starting to work on that opening. I think that we're going to be looking at that probably mid-October. The Hillside Farms project at Stone Hill Village, these are underway. Two phases, like I said earlier, 246 luxury apartments and 97 of them, I believe, are in this Phase 1. They'll have all concrete private roads, so they're not township roads. They're all maintained by the apartment complex and all concrete drives and they're underway. Kind of the sister one, that was the one Randy talked about earlier, Bridalwood is Walnut Ridge. It's directly across the street, same development company. This is on the township side. There'll be 84 single-family homes. And they're in the process of finishing up all their final stuff through the county and everything else. And that should be starting probably in '26. We do have one that was approved at the trustee level zoning-wise, but it still needs to come back for its final, second, final-stage development plan, which is McIntyre Estates that might not have that same wording when they bring it back through. But that's what it was called when it was approved the first time. It's in kind of an infill. It's south of one development and west of Stone Hill Village development. And it's for only 100 acres on, 100 units on a large amount of acres because there's so much of that that is wetland areas and that sort of things that they can't really develop on. So it was only approved for 100 single-family homes and the new developer coming in is keeping it at that 100 single-family homes. We anticipate that filing probably within the next two months. So like I said earlier, currently we have about 940 lots approved for building. It's quite a few, but not all of them are shovel-ready sites. Several areas in their works, remainder of Stone Hill Village, of course Walnut Ridge, McIntyre Estates. Those are all within the pipeline that we're working on right now. We have 1,500 more units in the pipeline. So that's, some of those areas that I showed you that we don't have is showing up for development that's been approved yet, but we sure know it's coming. So at a national average of three units per household, that could be a population increase for the township of around 5,000 people. And obviously a population increase for the, for the school district as well. Several commercial industrial opportunities. We talked about the infill at Dayton Xenia. And then the area south of the new US 35 and Tray Mine intersection, that's owned by one, one family, the McGinnis Brothers. And they're wanting to do some commercial development, industrial development down there. They just need to kind of figure out what they want to finally do and get it underway. And then the areas around the Green County Airport. We talked about Green County buying some and there's some other areas south of that that are primed for development as well. Township recently passed some transient vendor regulations. So from all you guys, I've had a knock on the door saying, would you like to buy this? Or can we do this for you? Or would you like a new roof? We've tried to, or we have passed regulations now that give some guidance to what they can do. So time, place and manner, we can restrict those. So on July 7th, the township enacted the regulations and these regulations regulate the time, place and manner in which these vendors can go out and solicit for sales at the residences. It's only in the unincorporated area that we could pass the regulations for. So those of you in the city, I'm sure you have something similar that you guys have. Highlights for this, they must register with the township and there's a $150 fee per vendor. So they can't just do it per company. Every one of the members of that company has to pay that $150 fee. That registration's valid for 90 days and they can only operate between the hours of 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. So the town, the trustees went back and forth and thought this was good enough to allow them to do business, but also restricted enough to give people some privacy in the evenings. And once you get that registration, it can't be assigned to another person or it can't be shared with a whole group. It's per person, per individual. And they have to have that with them while they're out there conducting our sales and, or their sales. And they have to have that with them while they're out there conducting our sales and, or their sales, and, uh, when there's a no soliciting sign in place, they're, that's off limits to them. Township, uh, has gone, got some window clings, uh, that were, are available to our residents. Little thing that you can stick on the inside of your window that says "No Soliciting." So if you're a Township resident and you're needing one of those, swing by our office and grab one up. We have them right there in the Community Development Department. Also, um, talking about things that we're working on together and, and part of a community. We've, uh, worked, uh, us and the city have been working really hard on a community survey that we have been, just been finishing up today, as a matter of fact. We both got grants from the Dayton Foundation to fund this survey. Uh, we started a long time ago, Colin at the city, you know, and myself, trying to vet out contractors to use to do the survey. And we ended up with Management Resources. Uh, they've done a great job for us. And, uh, as of today, uh, when we did that, there are about 969 partial and complete surveys. That's way more than they anticipated when we first started that. I think when they gave presentations of us, they were expecting like 400 or 500, so we've doubled that at least. So that's a good sign, um, and the results will be in finalized, and we're looking forward to seeing those. Hopefully, that'll give us some guidance on, you know, development, on services, on amenities for the Township and the city. So we're, we're all looking forward to getting that data and seeing what it says. All right. Lastly, some of the things that we're working on from the Community Development. Uh, we're working on internally. Uh, we got our GIS licensing now, so we're doing some maps and things along those lines. Working to update, as well as the city, our community plan. Uh, we are, we already had, the consultant came in and did a lot of the work. We're trying to tailor it down to where we think we're comfortable with it as a Township, and work on getting that adopted. And we're in the process of, uh, looking at our zoning resolution. Um, as that, uh, community plan comes online, ours as well as the city's is going to need to be adjusted. So, uh, uh, we're going to be working on that over probably in the next 12 months or so. We always are digitizing and upbeat, keeping records, and, uh, we're exploring some zoning software. Uh, I don't know, I probably need to check with, uh, with Randy and, and the city and see what kind of stuff you guys are using and what you're happy with, because we're just in the infancy of taking a look at that, but, um, questions?
Need to just, a couple, for the schools, done a couple of clarifications. So the courtyard is, courtyard development is 162 age-targeted, you know, single-family homes. And they're all 30 homes, it's age-targeted. Hillside Farms is 246 ranch-style age-targeted apartments. And again, they're targeted 55 and older, and so I'm restricted, but they're targeting that. And then the nursing home is actually called Overbrook Landings.
They have two, which was that now? Very age-targeted.
Is there any sense of, you know, how effective that kind of age-targeting is? I mean, so maybe it's not all new.
It's not restricted, obviously, but it's, essentially, from a marketing perspective, my understanding is from a marketing perspective, amenity and structure that they offer to their residents, that, that's what it caters to. So if you look at the apartments, I think they have an average occupancy of 1.15 persons per unit. So it's, it's, as well as the lost house, it's the single parents. It's, uh, in some cases, it is 30-somethings that are looking for, for housing.
Okay, thanks. A lot of it's the style and type of the, of the homes they're having too. Like, like the trustee Kurt said, I mean, they're smaller, um, they're not necessarily family-oriented as much. So they are bas, basically targeting that way.
Why is square footage of them? You're saying small.
Yeah, so on the single-family homes, probably anywhere from 1,400 to 1,800, where no basements, no, no second floors.
Yeah, they're.
Maybe a bunch of apartments, they're 900.
By yesterday's standard, they're big. By today's standard, they're small. So, yeah. Any other question? Thank you for the clarification. All right. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. In the Public Service Roads Project City.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'm, uh, Jeff Mormon. I'm the Public Service Director for the City of Beaver Creek, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the, uh, active roadway projects and some products that are coming up in, in the very near future. Yeah, I should say, uh, when the drawing comes up, you'll, you'll see that, um, there's multiple projects we have active along, um, in front of school buildings across the entire city. And I'd like to start off just by thanking the, uh, school board and staff for all the help you guys have offered in coordinating those projects. I think everybody wins, we work together on these things, and especially the, uh, the traveling public and the parents getting their kids to school. I think things have worked out pretty good so far. But certainly, um, if you guys get word, if there's an issue or something could be improved, please, uh, reach out to us, and we're more than happy to, to work to change things to, to better accommodate traffic flows. Uh, with that, just touch on a couple of the projects. Uh, down at the very bottom of the screen, uh, we do have an active project along North Fairfield Road through Shakertown to Fairbrook School. Uh, this is a exciting project for us because of the pedestrian improvements we're going to be constructing with this project, which will really help get the kids to school a little bit easier and safer, uh, as well as improvements to the roadway to, uh, soften the horizontal curve and some vertical curvature out there. So when it's all said and done, um, it should be a much safer roadway for both pedestrians and vehicles. Uh, project number two, it's not close to a school, but knowing that the, uh, school bus barn is just up the way along Dayton Xenia Road, I wanted just to briefly talk about the Factory Road project. Um, we are planning on replacing the existing bridge there on Factory Road, and when we do that, we're going to have to close the road when we reconstruct that. Uh, currently, the project isn't planned to start until the, uh, spring of, uh, 2026. So our, our goal is to, to start then and to have everything finished prior to the beginning of the school year in the fall of '26, so we can utilize the entire summer break as part of that, uh, that project. Moving on to project number three. And we have, uh, an active project along Dayton Xenia Road in front of Main Elementary School. Uh, that project's been active for a little while now, and it's actually progressing very, very well, where they're, they're ahead of schedule. Um, there's a chance that that could be done, uh, summer of, uh, 2026, where we can get that hopefully wrapped up and out of the way for everybody when school begins again in the fall of 2026. Uh, project number four, uh, we do have a project along Kemp Road. Uh, that's planned to start in, uh, 2027. It's a pretty major reconstruction project, so I just wanted to mention it tonight to give some, uh, advance notice on that. Uh, we're buying right-of-way now and again, constructing in 2027. It'll be a lot of pedestrian improvements along with this one as well, as far as widening the roadway to match on the east and the west segments adjoining that. Uh, project number five, um, again, this one should be a very minor disruption to the, uh, to the junior high, but, uh, we're going to be building a, uh, pedestrian path along the, um, the west side of Grinch Hall Road from 835 all the way down past, uh, Shakertown Road to, to the park there. Uh, when we do that, it's going to kind of meander through Spring House Park, which is, uh, along the west side of Grinch Hall Road there, where it's going to kind of spur off, and it'll, it'll help enhance the park as well as make that nice pedestrian connection through that area. And lastly, I wanted to mention a project we have planned. It's a joint project with Beaver Creek Township along Beaver Valley Road. Uh, that project will extend the, uh, the side path from the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood down to Dayton Xenia Road, and we'll, we'll do some roadway improvements as well. Uh, again, that's a, that's a joint project where each phase, both the city and the Township are participating. Uh, we plan to start design work on that in, uh, 2026, and construction in 2018, so. And with that, we happen to answer any questions?
It's Mormon on the path. It's on the west side of, uh, Grinch Hall. The residents get to that path.
Yeah, you know, um, we're going to have a, a crossing. It'll be a little bit further north. The name of the street escapes me, but it'll be, yeah, well, it, it won't be from the Willowcrest neighborhood. It'll be to the plat to the north there. We're going to have a, a crossing. But it, it won't be possible to access it from, say, Willowcrest. When they, when they build that path, it's going to, again, spur through the park a little bit. There'll, there'll be a pretty decent distance from the intersection with Willowcrest back, back to the path. So when we do future improvements, we'll certainly look at, at getting some more crossings in there and some connections, but they'll have to go from the, the north side there. Great, thank you, everybody.
Good evening, school board, city council, township trustees. My name's John Schroeder. I am the Director of Public Service for Beaver Creek Township. I'm not sure where our, we saw them for a minute, where our slides are, but, um, just to bring it kind of up to, I'll go ahead and start through, there we go. Um, this year, we have had, we've had joint projects with both jurisdictions. Um, the first one I want to speak with is, uh, the Ankeny Road Tile Project. Uh, we had residents coming to us with a, a problem with stormwater. Um, upon investigating that, what has been determined is, over the years of pavement, we never took off pavement. So we were always building up higher and higher. Then, on combination of that with the school board, when we built Coy Tray Mine School, those elevations had changed. So, um, I was able to get in contact with, uh, Dave Bumgardner, and we both discussed it and went and looked at the problem, and, uh, came up with a plan to dr, direct some of that water to a dry well that you guys have on your property. And then he took that to you guys for, for approval. Um, that project took place. We went ahead and replaced, um, tile going across Donham Drive. And then, once we got across there, we put a catch basin in, um, on the west side of Ankeny Road. Once we got that in, um, then we were able to go, this is the catch basin here. We were able to go to this dry well. What was happening with these, this residence here is this water had no outlet. So there was no outlet for that stormwater to ever leave, and their septic system is in their front yard. So when it would flood, it would obviously back up into their, their residence. So, um, it was a great collaborative effort between the school board and us. Uh, we really appreciated the, um, the work, working relationship that got us to this. We had kept an eye on that dry well for quite some time during the heavy rains we had back in '24, '25, um, and none of those dry wells had ever filled up. So they obviously have great capacity, because we had some pretty good rains in '24. Um, that's why this project took a little bit longer. Started in '23, but we want to make sure we did some due diligence before we just started throwing pipes in the ground. And there was this dry well, and then there's another one just over, there is right there. So this was obviously the best route, and, um, appreciated Mr. Bumgardner coming out, working with us, and, and both of us kind of taking a look at the situation. And in doing that, we took the fence out. Um, as we laid that pipe through there, we took out this tree that was dead. Obviously, with you guys allowing us to, to do the work for what we needed, it was kind of, we were like, hey, we'll take care of the tree. There was a little bit of a ridge underneath the fence. We took that out to allow some of that water to, that was getting trapped between the fence and Ankeny. It allowed that water to, to escape as well. So it was beneficial to both parties, um, and we were glad to do it. So that was, um, that was the big project that we had with, uh, with schools that was very, um, very worthwhile. Then obviously, you can see some of the work here. Did it in sections. We did Donham first. Um, and this is what you're seeing here, is the patch back in on Donham, and then the finish. And then I believe, um, there was supposed to be a video here, but it may not be there. Oh, there it is. Well, if I can go back. So, there was a video there. I must've clicked on it wrong. But anyway, that was a great effort. We appreciated your, your collaborative effort with that. Another pro, obviously, our resurfacing program that we had this year. Um, we work with Green County, do a collective bid, which is very, um, good for us. We finished off paving George Wythe and Peyton Randolph. That's down in Arlington off of Factory, by Factory and Indian Ripple Road. So we finished off that plat, and then we chip sealed lineball, route song, and spurling. Obviously, with those roads being out where they are, there's, there's not very much traffic on them. So it was the most cost-effective, um, option to resurface them with chip seal. Um, again, it was chip sealed, I want to say it was about 20 years ago that, that it's been chip sealed, so it was time to be redone. Obviously, for our tentative for '26 is we're going to be paving Deer Hollow Trail, Whitetail Court, Bambi Court, Hillview Court, Heatherwood, Deer Hollow, and Cosswor. Those all run off of fairgrounds between Tray Mine and Beaver Valley. So those, those are going to, those are tentative for next year, uh, to get paved. And again, as with the city, we, again, this is a collaborative effort that Jeff spoke about a little bit ago, is, um, we're working with the City of Beaver Creek on the pathways to, uh, Beaver Valley. So this has been a, an effort that's been going off for quite some time and will continue to do so. The other pathway that I think I may have clicked past was, for the school board, was at Coy Tray Mine, again, the shared-use path. That's obviously a collaborative effort between the school board, trustees, Green County, and Green County Trails and Parks. So, there it is. Uh, that project is actually, I think it's a little bit ahead of schedule. Um, I anticipate it may be done before October, um, just by watching the, the progress they've made. Um, asphalt is down, so now they're pretty much just getting ready to kind of start doing their backfilling, um, on the edges. Um, so that project, again, that's another collaborative effort, uh, multi-jurisdictions. So, again, I think it may be done just a hair before October, but, again, as long as nothing else, you know, if they don't have any run into any problems. And again, the, you know, Beaver Creek Township Public Service, our, our goal is to, to provide, um, services that our residents can be proud of. Um, snow removal for us, obviously, is vastly different than the City of Beaver Creek. Um, we have four snow routes. So we also have to take care of the five fire stations. We plow those as well. The government center, the library, and the cemetery. So in snow, we, we main, we're kind of everywhere. Obviously, we don't have, some of our plats don't necessarily connect to get us all around, so we do have some dead time when we're traveling from plat to plat or road to road. Obviously, we do roadway maintenance, as you can tell in the pictures there. Paving, we do a lot of patching. We do a lot of, um, right-of-way mowing, uh, curb repair. Curb repair's been a big one since, you know, a lot of people here from the Township can remember the estate-style streets with no curb. Well, as times have changed, so has that. So now we have a lot of curb and gutter. So for us, we're now going back through and replacing some of that infrastructure that's deteriorated over the years. Street sweeping and, uh, stormwater management, as you can, as we just discussed. And then ground maintenance, uh, we have to maintain, we maintain the Beaver Cemetery, the five fire stations, and the Beaver Creek Library. Also, the department, um, takes care of the fire department's vehicle fleet, along with the general, um, vehicles and the road public service vehicles. So we have a fleet mechanic on call 24/7. All fire apparatus, and, and the share of substation cruisers go through, repaired by us. And then, as the jack-of-all-trades to the road department, we also do building maintenance. We do some, you know, remodeling and repairs and preventative maintenance. So we use that in the wintertime. That helps, um, sustain our, our road folks that sometimes when they're not able to be out on the road, instead of just trying to find something for them to do, it gives them an opportunity to go do some building maintenance, help save some money on the Township side from having to hire outside contractors. So, and with that, the Township's growing. Um, obviously, you know, the eastern portion of, of Beaver Creek is growing, and so as that grows, we're monitoring that, um, growth, and will also affect our department for growth. So that's kind of where we stand at that point. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer, or? All right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Graham. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Beaver Creek. And, uh, Pete, I think if we'd have waited just a little bit longer, I wouldn't have had to get up, gotten up and talked at all, because a lot of the stuff that, uh, we were talking about, has already been discussed to some level or not another. One creek, I like that, uh, saying, because it's kind of what we're talking about, is shared services, how we can come together and provide the best benefit for our citizens at the lowest rate. So we, we all have things that we're, we're maybe a little more versed at. So, um, talk a little bit, first dispatch. I, I know the chief hit on that a little bit. We have a, an agreement with the Township, um, that is adjusted annually based on a consumer price index or an index number, um, that, uh, currently, that's generating about $300,000 a year. price index or an index number, that currently, that's generating about $300,000 a year. Monica's going to talk a little bit about Senior Center, which that would have been one last thing I could have talked about, but, so that is a collaborative effort between the township and the city. We receive grant money from the Senior Council on Aging, which is supported by property taxes from the county, countywide levy. That generates about $311,000 a year. That represents, based on the population of both the township and the city. In addition to that, the township assists us with the capital needs of that senior center. We have a fuel agreement with the township where we charge them for our actual cost of that fuel, plus 13 cents to cover administrative costs associated with providing that service. Hopefully, everybody receives their in-touch. Again, a collaborative effort the city puts on where we mail informational pieces out or booklet out to the citizens of both the township and the city, discussing, highlighting things that are important or that are ongoing within both the township, the city. County gets involved in it occasionally, as well as the Township Park District. Generates about $13,000 a year, nothing large, but we do attempt to cover some of our costs on that. Obviously, all of our departments share equipment as it's needed. That's something that I think primarily deals with the road departments. Our radio system and a number of our computer systems are located at the township. We have a couple of joint road projects, the Super Street, which is coming to an end in 2025. No, the Super Street will still be there, don't worry, but the payments related to it are coming to an end. And then, the side path that was mentioned along Beaver Valley and Dayton-Zenia. With the schools, obviously, chief mentioned the School Resource Officer, providing salt to the school district. For your needs, obviously, we can probably store and provide it to you a lot cheaper than what you could do on your own. And then, I know our golf course loves working with the Beaver Creek students and arranging their golf schedule for the year and working with those students. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. One last comment, we're always looking for new ways that we can work collaboratively so that we can provide better benefit to our citizens. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Monica Jones, I'm the Assistant City Manager with the city. I did want to provide just a quick overview of the Senior Center. I know that we've got that joint agreement with the township, and many of the residents have memberships, there's still actively over 2,500 members to the Senior Center. So, last year, I actually also presented on this topic because we had resurrected a capital joint sharing agreement between the city and the township, so I wanted to provide an update on that. We had requested $50,000 total, so 25 from each group for ADA compliant reception area, and then we had also budgeted, each group had budgeted $2,500 for a commercial refrigerator. So, there's a kitchen inside the Senior Center that is utilized for a lot of their special luncheons, and there's a whole volunteer group called the Lunch Ladies and different groups, so that refrigerator was sort of reaching end of life. So, both of those things were budgeted in each of the organization's budget. Staff is working on getting quotes for the refrigerator, so that should be installed in the coming, coming months, hopefully, if not weeks, depending on which one is selected. The update for the reception area is a little bit bigger, but it's a good story. So, we delayed that project a little bit because the township and the city worked very closely to submit a grant application to the county through their competitive CDBG process, hoping to leverage the money that we had each set aside in our budgets to grow the scope of that project. Ultimately, essentially, the county called and said it was a great application, they weren't going to fund it through CDBG, but please apply for, through their CIG process. So, they recently, I think in the last couple of weeks, got that award grant, and so the project will be able to kick off. Staff is working on contacting a vendor to do the drawings, the renderings, the phase of that, and Andy's been kind of instrumental in working in tandem with the Parks Division with Zach. So, we'll continue that collaboration, but that project will carry over into next year, even though it was budgeted in the 2025 budget. So, that was a good success story. Our, each organization's 25,000 was able to leverage an additional 52,000 almost from the, from the county, so that's $100,000 total kind of update to the reception area to make it ADA compliant and a lot better for our volunteers who are elderly and sometimes have mobility challenges. That kind of is a good segue into this coming budget. There are no city funding levies on for this year, nothing in the May election, there's nothing on the horizon for November, which does mean that this is going to be, so 2026 will be the second year that the Parks Division's in a deficit year. So, they're in their seventh year of their levy built on a five-year model. This has meant that we're going to continue to defer capital, and that would include this year, nothing at the Senior Center. So, there were a couple pieces of equipment in the fitness room and some other things, we're going to defer those. We've gone to a quarterly maintenance program in the fitness room, so we're hoping to just make those pieces of equipment last a little longer, should something break mid-year like it did this year. We'll seek out some fundraising and some grants, but that's sort of the plan and why we haven't really had those conversations yet. There's intentionally deferring capital in recognition of the budget constraints that we're facing. The other thing you might have heard about recently related to the budget is that we did reduce the Senior Center hours. Again, that was for budget reasons. We were able to do that this year, sort of as an accidental opportunity with the way the staff, that position, actually accepted another position in another organization full-time, so rather than try and find a position that might only have been staffed a couple of months, we went ahead and made that tough decision. We worked closely with Green County Council on Aging, who provides funding for operating the Senior Center, but also with the township to kind of give them notice of where our head was and why we were making this challenging decision, and ultimately, the recommendation. So, there was quite a bit of pushback from the members in the community. It was effective at the end of August, so for the last couple of weeks, it's been the new standard hours, we're no longer open on Saturdays, and we actually close at 4:00 every weekday. They're not thrilled about it, but the seniors are adapting, so that will continue to be reflected in the upcoming budget as well, is just holding those hours and not staffing that part-time position. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the caveat to the no-capital project. So, next year on the horizon, the Senior Center is actually eligible for a transportation grant for a van replacement through Green County Council on Aging. That's different than their operating grant, which we get every year, but it's a special grant, so that will sort of go through the process next summer, and we have been starting a fundraising campaign, so the grant will be up to $40,000. A new van is roughly $160,000, and so we have proactively started a big fundraising campaign. There's actually a Uker tournament next Thursday trying to fundraise for, so come, $30 a person. We can send you more information, but we're trying to be proactive so that we can secure additional funds and leverage that grant, and hopefully do a van replacement, so that might be the one caveat. We're also looking at the PDAC process, I don't know how many of you are familiar, but your names are always on the list each year too, so that's coming up at the end of October. We're trying to get creative and see if maybe we would be competitive in one of those categories, and if so, would we go after a PDAC application, and if so, would we still keep it to one van? Right now, it's a replacement, so it wouldn't add any capacity or any new routes, it would truly take the older, oldest van out of service, so it would be kind of a one-for-one, it would be no new service, excuse me, no new service, but hopefully, newer vans would be up a lot more. We've got a number that have some downtime, and that kind of causes a big scramble when they've got riders planned out, and then a van goes down at the last minute, so a new van would help alleviate that. But that is a discussion, if we end up pursuing PDAC, potentially, we would reach out to the township in lieu of the capital for the equipment and other things, maybe we would secure, if not a letter of support, potentially also some funding to continue to leverage additional funds. So, that's kind of my high level, what's on the horizon for the Senior Center. If there are no questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Paul Otten, Superintendent here at Beaver Creek. First of all, I want to welcome everybody here, and glad that everybody found it okay and you didn't go to the other building, because we tend to have that happen quite a bit. So, I've got a number of things I want to share with the start of the school year coming up. First of all, one of the things that we do every year is, obviously, we have a number of individuals who retire each year, and so we have to fill those positions. So, as we look at the start of this school year, we welcomed approximately about 70 new staff members. So, a number of those, obviously, are certified, many are classified as well, and so it's always exciting to have individuals who are excited about coming in, but it's also sad to watch the individuals who have put so much time into the district that are leaving. Tonight, at our, we had a board meeting at 5:00, so that we didn't have to take action during this meeting, and we recognized one of our staff members who was one of the best I've ever seen, welcomed herself in the retirement, so it was great. Hard to believe that our staff have been in session now for six weeks, and our students have been in session for five weeks. We have new programming, we're going to, Beth is going to talk about some of the exciting things that are happening with programming tonight. We have three new building principals. Dale Wren, who was our high school principal, graduate of Beaver Creek, Dale has taken over as the Director of Student Services here. So, Laura Bailey is the new principal at Beaver Creek High School. Jay Reynolds, who was at our high school, is now the new principal at Ankeny Middle School, and Jen Robinson came to us from outside the district, she is the new principal at Fairbrook. Our football team is 2-2, so pretty exciting. If you haven't been to a game, I'd encourage you to get out to a game. We are 1-0 in the G-Walk, and if you look at the G-Walk standings today, we are listed in first place right there. I think it's because we have, we start with a B, but, but we are listed 1-0, so we are very excited. I know our kids are excited, and we're excited for our kids. They work really hard, they deserve to have that recognition, so we're very excited for them. Our men's cross-country team currently is ranked number one in the state, so we're very excited about that. Our marching band is always an incredible group of individuals, and they do a great job, and they have already started winning those awards. This week, Thursday, is our homecoming parade, hopefully, you'll be out for that. This entire week is, we have different themes, so tomorrow, everybody in the district will be wearing orange and black, so if you have your orange and black, I encourage you to wear it tomorrow. Want to talk about our district levy renewal information, so that's really the start of our school year. Thank you, Mike. Mike, by the way, Mike's doing a great job back there in the closet, switching everybody and jumping between PowerPoints, so great job, Mike. We are going to be on the ballot, this is a renewal levy. Want to give you a little bit of history behind this, we're asking for five years again, 18.5 million, it equates to 6.8 mils. Give you a little bit of history, this was first approved in 2001, and then we had a second levy that was approved in 2003, and the board, probably in 2009, decided that they wanted to merge those, so in 2010, those were merged into one levy. 18.5 million dollars is a monster levy for any district in the state of Ohio, so that is a huge, huge levy, especially when you look at our budget being about 110 million dollars. So, to have 18.5 hanging the balance, that's pretty significant. It's a fixed-sum levy, so that number, that 18.5, is where we see it, and that's what we collect. No increase for that, what it is not, it is not a bond issue. So, we ran a bond issue back in November and May, and those both failed, those were to build a new high school. This is not that, so this is totally for operating expenses. We've had a number of individuals ask us, especially at the popcorn festival, if this was going to be the same one to build a high school, and we have said, no, this is not for this, this is solely for operating. It's to pay the electric bills, to buy equipment, pay salaries, so on and so forth, but it will not be for a bond issue. With that being said, as we've heard tonight, there's a number of new developments coming in, and we are already at capacity, so we recognize as a district, we need to go back and look at what our master facility plan will be moving forward, but what I can tell you is, we do not anticipate that will be a high school, that will be something different. Our goal is to find something that will be a yes vote, rather than something that we see as maybe a great opportunity for the district and community. We have to get space, because we're running out of it very quickly. Hence why we're in this building, simply is because we needed to give the preschool kids that other building. All right, the next item I'd like to cover is embargoed information, and so they said, please don't share this with anybody until September 17th, and I said, we're going to share it anyway, so just don't go out and post it. Or, well, I'm sorry, Joy, I was going to jump my item, but why don't I let you come on up, and then I'll cover the next item. I forgot that she's tied into the last item.
So, part of mine, because it affects us so much, is House Bill 96, the Bynial Budget for the state. I wanted to update you on some significant developments in Columbus that are directly impacting our district's funding. Since January, Ohio legislators have introduced over 50 property tax reform bills, 50 of them. I mean, they are busy, it's just crazy. All of them will affect schools like ours in some way. Several of these provisions actually made it into the state budget that passed in June. One of them was, they wanted to give the county budget commissions more power over our voter-approved levies. So, when you think about this, our community votes to support our schools through a levy, but under this change, the county budget commission could essentially say, sorry, Beaver Creek, you don't need the money, we're not going to collect it, basically taking local control away from our community. Second, they approved a 40% cap on how much money we can carry from year to year. The calculation on this is, they take our previous year's spending, they multiply it by 40%, and that's all we're allowed to save for this year into the next. If we save more than that, they'll reduce our property tax collections. As you can see, there's a little bit of a pattern here. This makes it incredibly difficult to plan for unexpected expenses or, you know, economic downturns. The third change would require emergency and substitute levies to be included in a district's 20-mil floor calculation. I'm not going to go into what a 20-mil floor calculation is, certainly David Graham back there could do better at that than I could. But back in the late '60s, early '70s, Beaver Creek City Schools voters approved continuing operating levies that generate additional revenue when property values go up during reappraisals on these voter-approved 20 mils. This revision would reduce or possibly eliminate that growth entirely by requiring emergency and substitute levies to be included in those calculations. Finally, and this is the one that's most concerning to me, they want to eliminate emergency and substitute levies entirely, starting in January of this year coming up. The levy we have on the ballot is an emergency levy, it's a renewal. Under this change, we could not bring renewals like this to voters anymore after this year. Our community is used to seeing these renewal levies, they understand them. Plus, this renewal comes with a 12.5% state discount for homeowners, because any levy that was approved by the voters before 2013 qualifies for the homestead and rollback reimbursement from the state. If we have to replace it with a new levy type, our residents would actually pay more because the state wouldn't cover that discount anymore for our property owners. So, here's the good news. Governor Dewine, line item vetoed, all of those, he said no, that's too much, there's too much harm that could happen to public school districts if we let these go through. But, the legislature has until December of 2026, so a whole, you know, year from now, to override his vetoes. The House already voted on July 21st to override the veto on eliminating emergency and substitute levies, so they're starting this process. The Senate is expected to take this up sometime in the next month or so. We fully expect them to take a vote on this, to eliminate those levy types. Why does this matter so much to us specifically? So, we are what's called a locally funded district. We are given the state share minimum of 10% funding per student, because the state of Ohio says, you have the local capacity to fund your own district, based on your income tax wealth and your property wealth. Beaver Creek, you can do this on your own. We'll give you 10%, we're going to give you the minimum, that's it, that's all you're going to get. This 10% gives us $800 per student for our regular base funding. It gives us another 800 for all these next categories together, special education, gifted, English learners, career tech funding, disadvantaged pupil, and transportation, for a total of $1,600 per student, which equates to just $12 million. That is the cost to operate and put our yellow That is the cost to operate and put our yellow buses on the road and to pay for utilities. That's all that pays for. Everything else comes from our local taxpayers. So this is huge for us. If they start to do any of these, it's going to have a major impact on this district. The uncertainty of this is what makes it so challenging, because we're trying to plan budgets, we're trying to make long-term financial decisions, but we don't know which one of these provisions might become law and when. It's like trying to plan a road trip, and you don't know which roads are open and which ones are closed. It's a huge concern. So that was Ed, and I'm going to turn this back over to Ms. Rotten.
See, Joy can bring the room down, and I'm going to bring it right back up. Just kidding, Joy. No, we've been going around to all our staff. Joy and I have been going around to meet with all our staff members just to share this information and make sure that they're aware of what's going on as well. So we're thankful to be able to share it with you. The next item, which this is the information as I shared that's embargoed, we are very, very excited about this news. So there is a group, it's a national group called the League of Innovative Schools. It is an organization that you hear of, you see school districts that are in it, and you wonder, how in the world do you get into that league? How do you get into this top-level group? And so we were, we received notice, I received an email last school year, that we were nominated as a possible League of Innovative Schools district, and you would think that you would just fill out an application. We filled out an application, then we had a very intense interview with the members of the league, and then they identify which districts will be accepted into the league. Right now, there's approximately 150 school districts across the country, and I am very proud to say that we are one of those 150. So there are eight school districts in the state of Ohio that have been selected, and so we will be making our announcement on the 17th. That is when this goes public, but obviously, we're live right now, and I don't think the people from the league are going to care if they know that we at least told our group here. This was perfect timing for us. So we are very excited about this opportunity, and you'll be seeing more information about it. But it gives, it really gives kudos to what's happening in our classrooms, what's happening with our teachers, with our staff, all our staff working with our kids. We've got a lot of exciting things that are happening within the district right now. All right, going on, I'm going to pass this over to Beth, and Beth is going to share some of the things that we're doing that helps us to get this recognition.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, everyone. I get the exciting part, to continue the good news about things that are happening in Beaver Creek City Schools. So we wanted to share a little bit about some of the grant funding that we have received over the last several years. So since FY14, we have applied for over 48 grants, $32 million worth of funding that we've applied for in competitive grants, which is a lot, because we're not eligible for a lot of competitive funding opportunities. We've received over $16 million in grants over those years. Most recently, in December of '22, we received a school-based mental health grant. That's a federal education grant, totaled about $4.48 million. It enabled us to increase our school-based mental health support services by 15 and a half personnel, puts a social worker in every school. It's dramatically decreased waitlists for services for our students who need mental health supports. In December of '23, we were fortunate to receive a Ohio Career Technical Education Equipment Grant for 1.3 million. That enabled us to start two new career technical education programs at our high school, information, technology, and cybersecurity. It also allowed us to expand our education and training and our business pathways. You'll see lots of new things happening as a result of these grants, particularly the equipment from them, even to the tune of a new school store run by our business and entrepreneurship classes that'll be launching this school year. Very exciting things on the horizon. And then in September of '24, so a year ago, we were fortunate to receive the Department of Defense Education Activity Military Connected Academic Support Program Grant. It's quite the word, mouthful. That was a $2 million grant for preschool through grade eight STEM expansion. That's enabling us to have innovative STEM learning spaces in our preschool and our middle schools, and then, we're calling them STEM carts, really STEM carts, with four STEM teachers going around to our kindergarten through five classrooms at our elementaries. We don't have room for a separate space, like a room for them, so they're on carts. Lots of hands-on STEM activities for students, so focusing on science, mathematics, engineering, and early coding is really a lot of the focus with that, getting them early into computer science, and lots of ideation and hands-on program activities. We are anticipating in the next two weeks, the potential for another large announcement along these lines, but we haven't gotten official awards, so stay tuned. Two district socials coming near you. Today was the public release of the state report card. Our schools received four and a half stars, so the state awards school districts by half-star increments, one to five stars. Five stars being the highest. We are at four and a half again this year, working on that last half. Just for awareness, three stars is considered meeting state standards, so three stars is the goal. Four is exceeding state standards. Five is exceedingly passing state standards. So you can see we are fours to fours to fives across the board. This is really a testament to the hard work of our students, of our staff, and the great things that are happening in our district. Obviously, there's always opportunities for continued improvement, so our teams will be looking at ways that we can continue to improve and push our students to learn and grow more, but we're very proud of all the hard work and the results of that. And then one last thing for my section to share. You may have seen this graphic in and around the district in different places, and you'll continue to see more about this. This is our Portrait of a Learner. This was one of the outcomes of our strategic plan process, and really focused on defining, what are the essential attitudes and skills that students should have when they graduate in order to be ready for success? Often, you see this called a portrait of a graduate, and when our teams met, they really felt like this was something that's important for all of our learners at all different ages, and recognizing that we have a lot of military-connected families who may not be with us from start to finish, but they're with us for a moment in time. And so all of our learners, whenever they are with us, these are the skills and the attributes that we hope for them to develop. You'll see they spell out Go Creek, so you'll see Go Creek as a mantra that we share, but it's really having, being globally aware, optimistic, confident, resilient, engaged, excellent-driven, and kind. Those are the attributes that we're looking for in Beaver Creek students. I'll turn it over to Mr. Alexander.
Right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tyler Alexander. I'm the Director of Business Services for the district. Our office has had a really busy summer. We have had three main projects that we have focused on this summer. Number one is roof repairs at Beaver Creek High School and at Ankeny Middle School. Anything that is highlighted here was, well, it will be completed October 1st. We are about 90% done. We did award the alternate bids in this project, so you can see we're doing a significant amount of this roof, the areas that really needed to be hit on this summer. Looking at Ankeny, everything in blue is, we completed this summer. Everything else was completed last summer. So in the last two years, two summers, we have completed every square foot of roofing at Ankeny Middle School, either replacement or repairs. If you've been to Beaver Creek High School, you have seen new asphalt. This project turned out very, very well. Here on the left side, anything in blue was completely milled down. We put new asphalt down, repainted. Everything in green on this campus was crack-filled, sealed, and restriped, and so we were thrilled with the work that was completed in a very timely manner, and it did not disrupt the functionality of the high school much at all this summer. This was the big project. One of the reasons that we are here today is because of the expansion of the Beaver Creek Preschool Center. If you remember, we had four classrooms at Parkwood Elementary last year because we were at capacity in the preschool center. That creates a lot of challenges for our administrative team to run the preschool in two different facilities, in addition to the fact that it makes sense to have all of our preschoolers in one location. So we made the decision to move here to Apple Valley for central office, and then we renovated the old central office into seven additional classrooms. Just to give you the aerial view, this right here is the preschool center, the original preschool center. This section right here was central office. Now the entire facility is all the Beaver Creek Preschool Center. It is absolutely amazing to watch the kids in this facility, to see them there, and to see them utilizing this great building for learning. We do have a project going on right here that is almost done. It is an additional playground for the preschool, as we brought the four classrooms from Parkwood back, plus adding another classroom this summer. We needed additional playground space, and that'll be wrapped up here very soon. This gives you an idea of what the layout is. This was the old boardroom, so if you were ever in a meeting in the old boardroom, it is now a multipurpose room. This pod here was converted into three classrooms. This is Kemp Road, sits right out here. Second pod, we have two classrooms, and then over here, this was kind of our copy center lounge area. We have, we had, we had restrooms here. This is now our main office and two additional classrooms. So right now, five of those, five classrooms are filled. One of those is being used as a STEM classroom. All of these classrooms are being used. We do have an open classroom in the bill, in the other portion of the building that does not have kids in it. We anticipate with our growth that those classrooms will be filling up here very soon. This is one of the neatest projects that I've been a part of in planning. What's exciting is we started the walkthroughs today with a company called Audio Enhancement. We are going to be, we're going to, this all started because the PA systems in our buildings, quite frankly, are not good and not reliable, and so we began looking at options. And Audio Enhancement, I met a couple of years ago. Paul has met the folks from Audio Enhancement even before that, and we are really excited to not only bring state-of-the-art PA systems to our buildings, but also we're bringing classroom audio to every single classroom across seven of our buildings. And so classroom audio, our teachers will be wearing a lanyard that is a microphone. They will be able to talk normally. They will be projected throughout the entire classroom, four to six speakers per classroom so students can hear. We have, also with this, comes with a safe button, and so our teachers, if in case of an emergency, will be able to hit a safe button on their lanyard. That will send notifications to our administrators exactly where they are at so that we can get to them very quickly. The mic 360 student microphone, obviously it is important for classroom discussion, for our students to be heard as well, and so it is actually, looks like a little Nerf ball that can be tossed in the classroom, and it has a student mic on it, so our students can talk into that microphone and be heard. This is probably one of the most amazing tools with this project, but our ELL, our ELL students, our English language learners, they will be able to tie into this system with their Chromebook, and as a teacher is speaking or a student is speaking, their Chromebook will then translate immediately into their native language what is being taught to them. And it's just a phenomenal tool that we're going to have in every single classroom in those seven buildings by the end of this school year. So we began these walkthroughs today. We will begin in some of the elementary schools end of October with this installation. All of the installation will happen at night. It will not disrupt our day. Teachers will leave their classroom without speakers one day, and they'll show up the next, and there'll be speakers there. After the installation, we will then calibrate the system, and then there will be staff training. And so by the end of, we're hoping by spring break, these seven buildings right here will all have this audio enhancement program, system in the building. You ask why, why only these seven? Koi Trebine already has classroom audio, and they received a new PA last year, and Ferguson Hall also received a PA last year, and so they're not a part of this initial group because of those reasons. I anticipate that when this is done, we will start planning very quickly to receive some of the tools that Audio Enhancement has in those buildings, but just not initially. Want to talk a little bit about capital improvement planning. This is something we've been working on for the last couple of years, and to kind of get you to where we're at now, to complete these projects, is back in March of '23, March through October, we did a full facilities audit using Four Seasons Environmental. So they came in, they looked at our HVAC, the asphalt, facade, roofs. They looked at every single building, and they put a plan together for us on what they anticipated our needs were going to be. Once we received all of that, that data, well, in November of '23, we passed the replacement permanent improvement levy. Permanent improvement funds are, the easiest way to put it is it's for things that you can feel and that you can touch, and they're going to last for five years. And so no salaries, no benefits can be, we can't use permanent improvement money for for those types of things. In October of '23, all the way through May of '24, we worked with Bradley Paint Advisors to develop a capital improvement plan. We really wanted a plan that was going to allow us to be proactive in maintaining our facilities instead of reactive. But what most people don't realize is that there's a lot more to permanent improvement and capital planning than just buildings. We met with curriculum, we met with athletics, we met with safety and security, student nutrition. So all of these groups are part of our capital improvement plan moving forward here in the This plan helps us drive decision-making. It allows us to, we're beginning to have discussions right now for projects next summer. June, May, end of May, June and July is the time where we're going to be completing most of those projects. So we begin now so that we can begin planning for RFPs and going out to bid. I talked about being proactive, not reactive. The other part of this is transparency, and this is hot off the press as of today. This will eventually be placed on our website, but it is an interactive tool, and I will, is an interactive tool that we're going to make available to our public. This here is just kind of an introduction page with a timeline of things that we have done within the capital plan, but over here, when you click on capital expenses, it really allows us to hone in on where all of our expenses are going to be in each year. We can look at specific groups and facilities and grounds, we can look at three-year spans, and we can really see where our plan is taking us. And also, this allows our community to see how we have allocated our funds within permanent improvement to keep maintaining our facilities. This plan is ever-changing. It changes constantly, and so as we make updates to the plan, as projects pop up that we aren't expecting, I'll use today as an example, our board approved a project, a plumbing project at Ankeny as urgent necessity because it's a $225,000 project, and we need to get going now so that we're not shutting water down for six to eight weeks. And so that wasn't in this plan, but without this plan, we're just, we're just going to write that check when it's done and not know what else is in the future. And now we're able to adjust this plan so that we can still maintain our facilities. The last thing that I want to talk about, and Paul spoke about this a little bit earlier, is our master facilities plan. As everybody is well aware, we failed the levy twice, and our community spoke loudly and clearly that the high school is not what they wanted, and so, but our growth is still coming. I hear that loud and clear from the presentations that happened today. We're still growing. We actually have engaged with Cropper, which is a consultant out of Columbus that is going to do our, another enrollment study for us. We're outpacing our current enrollment study, and so with all the changes... We actually have engaged with Cropper, which is a consultant out of Columbus that is gonna do our, another enrollment study for us. We're outpacing our current enrollment study. And so, with all the changes in the community, we want to make sure that we have accurate numbers and accurate projections moving forward. That is happening right now. We are going to have to have a Plan B. We're not sure what that Plan B is going to be. We will begin having those discussions this fall to see what options we may have. And then, our plan would be in January, February timeframe to get a larger group together of community members and community leaders like you to really look at those ideas so that we can make a decision by summer on what Plan B is gonna be to address our needs because we have needs and we need to address them within this district. The last part on the master facilities plan, we've spoke quite a few times about being a part of the ELP program, which is the Expedited Local Partnership Program where the state would reimburse us for the project when it was our turn. It's not our turn to be co-funded with the state. That expires in November. And so, we will have to re-engage with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission next August, September to get approved so that we can be an ELP school district when we're, when we believe we'll have to go back to the voters to see what Plan B is. Any questions for me? All right, thank you all very much. Turn it over to Mike, he's gonna come out of the closet.
Hey, everybody, I'm Mike Schuman. I'm the Director of Technology, been in Beaver Creek for far too long and I love every second of it. I have the privilege of presenting you with the last bit of information sharing and what is very exciting to me, it's called Trusted Learning Environment. This is a seal that we earned through COSIN. You can see in the colorful circle in the center. COSIN is a consortium of school networking. That is the professional organization that deals with people like me all the time and helps set national norms and standards. And they have this seal called the Trusted Learning Environment or the TLE. It was a good two-year endeavor we spent doing this. Around that colorful interlocked puzzle piece of wheels, you'll see all the areas that they have, but there's really five things I want to talk about. What it's about is student safety. It's really about data privacy in general. We talk about student data privacy, but all of our data is important to us. You all know at the township and the city, we are all under attack from people who want our data or who want to shut down our grids or, you know, all of those things are real, they're scary. And what this says is we believe that that's important, we understand what that is and we take it very seriously. That seal right there says that we have done all the things that COSIN believes are necessary to deserve that seal. It's on all of our websites. You can see the third bullet up there. This is not something that a lot of people do. Okay? There are 35 districts in the entire United States right now that have earned the right to put this seal on their website. If you go around the district, we joke about it all the time, cybersecurity. At every meeting, I say cybersecurity and act like I'm excited about it because that's my job. We're very serious. I'm Mike, cybersecurity Schuman. Family trust is about what it is and we all are in the same game when it comes to that. It's very important we have trust and we're very transparent about everything. Everybody who came up here and spoke tonight, everybody, we're all not trying to hide things, we're saying, hey, look what we're doing. We have information on our website about all of the cybersecurity and data privacy practices that we have, within reason. Obviously, we don't put a blueprint to hackers on how to get into our stuff, you know, you share what you can. But it's out there. That family trust is extremely important, the data privacy is important. We're one of 35 districts, stronger security is part of this. We are constantly working on our cybersecurity posture. Here's a shameless plug for you. We have a cybersecurity forum in December, on December 4th, at the high school in the auditorium. I'll be talking much more about cybersecurity and there's other people quite often that we bring too. We did one last year and including some of our cybersecurity students at the high school and they're quite impressive. So, I would suggest you come to that if you want to hear more of what we're actually doing for cybersecurity. And ongoing commitment is key. This seal doesn't mean we're locked down, we've got it, it's easy, we know what we're doing. It doesn't mean we think we know what we're doing and we're trying our hardest, but there's an ongoing commitment. We got about a 20-page document back after we wrote about 40 pages and it was on all the things that we did well and where they see our next things to improve our. And we have two years to show improvement in order to keep that sealed. So, it is an ongoing thing. We take it very seriously. I thank the board for their support because everybody has to listen to people like me when we say things like, hey, we're gonna implement multi-factor authentication. We all love that so much and we're going to have passwords that are this long. I like to say, you know, there's a seesaw and on one side it's convenience, on the other side it's security. And we used to be, hey, let's just be convenient, do whatever's nice, whatever's easy, we want to use this stuff. Then we realized, wait a minute, we're protecting real data and it's important. So, we've become much more secure and that's going to keep going back and forth, but cybersecurity and inconvenience, it's going to get more. So, we are very proud of this. It's an extremely happy moment that we got this and I, it's probably my crowning moment and I have to say out of everything I've done in technology education, this is my least favorite. I enjoyed putting in the first email servers and building networks and helping keep it in the classroom and Wi-Fi networks and all of those things that really made it fun. Cybersecurity is the area you don't want to go into. Oh, somber, and drained. All right, I think the next slide says, questions? All right, I like that.
So, I just want to say, I've learned so much tonight from the city, the township. I'd love these meetings to come together once a year. Thank you for your input and we're gonna open it up to roundtable discussion so if anybody has any input they'd like to share, other than, I can't imagine why, but okay, any questions, I'm gonna open up to the city and township and the school board.
From the township's perspective, we'd like to express our appreciation to the city, to council, to staff and all the department heads. So, your collaboration and your cooperation and your, all you do with our folks from the fire and EMS coordination, even with the sheriff department. As far as from our engineering and roads and improvements and the work we do together there to save taxpayers' dollars where we can and also just make things more efficient for travelers and for residents. As far as the senior center and the library, I see we own the building, but it's in the city and we all work together and it's for the greater cause. And so, it's appreciated, it's recognized, it's noticed. And then, the shared services, just, we've done some great things. There's more we could do, there's always opportunities and we need to look in corners we haven't looked in before for areas where we could save each other either time or resources or money. From the school's standpoint, Paul and Tyler and company and the board, kudos on the master plan forethought, is what I'll call it. The contingency planning of the what-ifs, what if the bond issue passed and what if it failed? And, you know, just not the uncertainties you worked through as far as coming to this facility and repurposing the Taj Mahal. Because the community knew it. It truly is now, it's a community asset as far as the preschool and what you've done there. And it's amazing facility. I believe from a shared service standpoint, I think the township and the city could probably look to the schools, there's, with your budget and our budgets and collaborative, some work as far as shared services and what could be done in the future. There's opportunity there. And we look at things like paving projects and what township does with Country Globe of the North and some other community sectors that we're paying too much for paving and things like that and we worked with them and they can jump on our bid process with the county and they can take advantage of those pricing. There's all kinds of opportunities. I'm sure you're working with the city and you're working with the township, but just continue to look for that. And then, thank you for your continued support of engaging our youth with our police officers, our sheriff and our fire and EMS. And so, as those youngsters become more and more comfortable with those allies in their life, then that's very important that they know those are friendly and they're there to help. And so, what you do in that process and what you provide and what you support is recognized. I'll get off my soapbox, but as you know, I'm winding down my tenure in local government, so it'll be done at the end of this year. And it's been a privilege working with each and every one of you. So, you're fantastic people and appreciate the work you've done. Just keep in mind that as a community, we're all, we're stronger as a community than we are as individual pieces and parts of it. And so, thank you.
I'd like to thank all the presenters that were, that did a great job on all sides of township, especially in the city and the board. You guys did a great job on your presentations. I'd like to thank the board especially for continuing our active shooter engagements, using the schools as the facility. And of course, I've always talked to Mr. Otten about thanking the principals being engaged and we've started a couple of years ago on that. And it's really great to have the principal of the school present at those active shooter engagements because I think they understand a little bit more about what's happening, especially if it happened in their school. So, I think it's a great training exercise for everyone present. I'd also like to challenge all of you that are present that we have openings in the Beaver Creek Auxiliary. You can join anytime, go through the training. We always need more people in our auxiliary to help with the fire department or EMS. And also, if you want to become a certener and get certified, we run trainings once or twice a year for certification. So, anyone that is interested, please contact our Assistant Fire Chief and she'd be happy to lead you in the right direction. So, thanks again.
I just want to reiterate what has already been said. We had this meeting, all three of us last year for the first time. And I think it's, it says it right up there, it's one creek we are. Because we're all in this together, all these things that are happening are affecting all of us in, maybe not exactly the same way, but in general it is. And being able to hear things that are going on in all the different areas in one spot is really nice to hear rather than getting a piece of information here, a piece of information there. So, I truly, truly believe that I'd like to continue these. I think we should continue these because I think it's really important. And I just thank the township for the way you guys work with us and our staff. I mean, I can't say enough about our staff and I'm sure you guys feel the same way and you as well. And the schools are, I'm kind of partial to schools. I've had several of my kids and grandkids go through and graduate from there. I still work a little bit with the schools for the show fire, so I still haven't figured out yet how to say no, but you know. But yeah, thank you very much for hosting us. We really appreciate you providing the space and the opportunity to get together and talk.
I'm looking forward to this again next year. Like, you know, I tell our new potty that comes into Beaver Creek Schools as a new employee, you know, you're not just joining a school district, you're joining a family. And that's how I feel about the township, the city and the schools. We are all one family. We're all in this together. We all want what's best for the community and what's best for the schools. And so, I want to thank you for this. This is just a special opportunity every year. And I learned so much, it's like, my mind is just blowing around, it's like, couldn't keep track of everything. That's why I'm writing and writing, but thank you so much. And you know, if there's anything you ever need or any answers you need, you know where to find Paul Otten? Or Joy, or me, or any of us, where Joy has Miller, she is our guru as far as fuck is going. But really, thank you so much for being part of our family.
I would encourage you to do this more than once a year. Not to this extent, not, because this is a lot of work for those who present, but this is my last term on council, so I want to, you know, trustee credits, but we've worked very well together, the city and the township. Deborah and I have served on boards together. Multiple trustees and council members serve on the same boards together. So, a lot of the first half of this presentation is refresher for us. But what I would say is there is great value totally learned from the schools. And while we are legally separate entities that do not interact for certain reasons and for decision-making that we do in the part of the city, we still represent the same residents. And when they reach out to us for questions, it would be great if we had better answers for them. And I'm sure when they reach out to you about a new housing development and how that impacts the city and the schools, you probably wish you had better information about that too. So, just my two cents on my way out the door after doing this for eight years, if there's a way to have better proactive communication as things come up that you think would impact the city and the township and things that we know would impact the schools, I would just want to encourage more constant communication in that sense.
I'm gonna add on to that, Joanna, because I think an annual update like we just received and we get updates from all of the departments and everything is a valuable thing. If we're gonna have a second meeting though, I think it would be wise to have more of a strategy session. Because here's what, I loved what we heard tonight. But what we didn't really talk about was the big problems that we need to work with each other, you know, property tax and the problem, and you know, the issues that are going on with the state. And, you know, if property tax gets abolished, we're all done for. I mean, so, we didn't really talk about, and it's not the forum perhaps for that, but I mean, a forum would be welcome in my opinion because we are one community and without, without property tax, for example, we're not here anymore, I guess, because we have no funding source either other than that. So, you know, you guys have just talked about Plan B. And I mean, I'd love to collaboratively talk about Plan B with regards to funding and so forth because nobody likes paying their taxes, I get that. But if we don't come up with another plan, whether it's increased lobbying from our elected officials to our state officials or whatever that might be, I mean, I think that we're in real trouble. So, I didn't mean to put a downer on everything because I'm psyched about where we are. I mean, we're an amazing community, I've lived here forever and never will leave. So, I want to stay here and I want it to be prosperous, but I think if we can work together on some of those really hard issues, then we'll be even better. So, that's all I have to say.
If I can piggyback off that, I think that would be helpful to do in this forum and maybe identifying issues like property tax and the different things we need to talk about, but then bringing in our state, state representatives and those people who are making those decisions who may not have the information they need to properly make those decisions. Because I feel that we have found that some people have been voting certain ways without consulting us, without consulting the city or, you know, so those type of things, we need to have that constant communication and I think we try to do that. But if we had all of us in a room together where, you know, all of these issues affect us in some way and having those representatives here to say, this is, if you do this, if you do X, this is what happens to the school, this is what happens to the city. And if you choose the other option, this is what it looks like, so that we can talk through those things so they can really see the big picture.
Yeah, I agree, Krista. And I mean, we speak, we reach out to our legislators from time to time, but, you know, we're not sure where the township stands or the school district stands and so forth. So, my point is we're stronger together.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, yeah, I love that.
Krista, I agree on all those points. I think it would be an excellent idea. The other thing I forgot to mention and I want to thank you, at our last meeting last year, I had mentioned about the communications that the school board was not putting out as far as, we didn't know when the school started, we didn't, because we weren't students. So, we didn't get a lot of the information. And you guys put out a great pamphlet this year that showed all the dates and all the information. And I called Paul and wrote him a note and told him. And I wanted to thank you for, you took that information that we discussed and brought it forward and sent it out to all the residents. And I thought that was a great, great document. And I was able to put things on my calendar and kept apprised of what the schools were doing. So, good job on all that.
Take a bow to prophesize more. If you get good communication, it's for positive.
Well, it was, you picked up on that idea and ran with it and did a great job.
Pete, to kind of capstone on your comments, so I think the best thing the city did this past year is she got David Graham's name off my tax bill. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you challenging me?
You're welcome. Well, once again, I want to thank you, everybody. This is just where the highlights were. This is just where the highlights were here, at least it is for me. Thank you for coming, thank you for staying late. But I think it's so worth it.
Move to adjourn. There we go.
Oh, okay. There you go. We're adjourned.
Second.
Yes.
Second.
First.
Sorry, I thought that was understood.
That's right. That's right. That's right.